Much allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, liberating justice for all.
Tom Miller, Vicated Alley?
So, I'm trying to look to create the alley between our property, between myself, Jerry Tuley, Frank Stone. I have a detailed map of everybody's property. The property we're trying to do to shut down doesn't land lock anybody. County right now pays the tax on it, or maybe we just, you know, we don't get any income from that property since it's part of the property. In between all of us owners, we would decide to, or we would cut the property in half and then split the property, paying the taxes on ourselves. You know, in saying that too, we also take responsibility for the properties rather than county taking the responsibility that we have right now. So, I guess that's the end of my speech.
Well, I've had a neighbor out there call me and they don't want...
Understand that. Understand that doesn't land lock them though.
Well, they, they still don't want to close. They say if a fire truck had come back down through there and stuff, closed. Normally if somebody in the area don't want to close, we don't...
This is Merle Avenue. Is that right?
Yes.
And Merle Avenue is about forty feet long. Is that correct?
Yes.
It runs about a half mile, I'm sorry, quarter mile.
I suppose so.
Um, so there are, I know there are properties along there. What, if that road was, are you talking about just closing the section between the two of you or that entire quarter mile? You want the quarter mile shut?
It's already, there's no, there's no road there right now. It's all our property. It's, it's all grass. It's, our trees are there and we planted everything about that property and that road, Merle Road, is non-existent. There, there is no road there. As we get, you look at any of the area photos, I take care of that grass.
Right.
It's here is grass. And we have, we have trees right in the middle, you know, we like.
Sure.
And there is no access.
But, but it, my concern though, it was when, when that subdivision was created, nineteen eighty-one, I think is when the survey was done of that or the drafting. Merle Avenue was put there and I know there are individual blocks or properties along that, that if a person, and, and I know, you know, they have purchased those properties, if they did want to develop those properties that are sectioned off, what would their means for getting people there?
Ray Road and will it keep all a direct access to the, to all of the properties in law?
But Ray Road tees into Merle Avenue. So if Merle Avenue is closed, you're going to get to the tee, but you're not going to be able to go north or south to get to those other properties.
It, it ends right at the other property. It's the, the, uh, right, it, it, yeah, it tees, but it's right at that tee is where the two front properties can go to one nineteen, the other properties go to Ray Road. It's all wooded, south of there. A fire truck can, uh, to the woods anyways through there.
Well, why do you want it closed?
Just because you don't want it to get public right away. Um, it's...
Well, Merle wanted, Merle Whipple wanted it. That's the reason it's, it's named after. That's Whipple.
And I'm just concerned if, if those were to be developed by someone who purchased those properties, you're shutting off access to those properties for development.
Is it public or are they going to, that property going to be maintained or maintained?
Well, I wanted to kind of ask Gary. Gary, you, you don't have anything to do with that road currently, correct? But if it were to be opened up, if somebody needed that road opened up, then would you?
Yeah, it's, it's, um, so we have to bring it up to the county specifications. So...
Ray, Ray Road is a dirt road as a whole.
The part portion of that, oh yeah, Ray's Road, yes.
Yeah, Ray Road's all dirt road. It's, I would love to have Ray Road upgraded to where, you know, my, my, myself and my mother both disabled. And going down Ray Road, that's, that's bump is all we get out. I actually been going on trying to build in this concrete just so that the holes will stop popping.
County's not even responsible for Ray's Road.
Yeah, the county's not taking any responsibility for Ray Road.
Right.
You see, it's out of town. So, Merle, it literally has just been part of our property. We've got children in the backyard. My, my, my parents around, we play in the backyard. Having that road opened up, it, actually, I, coming from California myself, it, it's, it felt like more like an alleyway than it would be a road because of how it's set up on the property. That's not, that's not really a road.
Right. And I under, I understand that. I understand that and I appreciate that. But if you have, uh, if you have homeowners who have purchased properties back there who may want to develop, then we're telling them, you just bought these properties and now you have no access to those properties. Because Ray Road... But...
It's the property of, like, Frank Stone, myself, and Jerry Tuley, we own all of the property.
But you also have, uh, an individual with four blocks right along there.
On one nineteen, because he has direct access.
One nineteen, but, but there are four blocks to the, I've got pictures if you want to see them. But there are four blocks that align with one nineteen and then there are four blocks directly behind to the east of those four. But if, but if you, no, this would be...
About all four and more else.
Right. Yeah. So if he, so if, if Mark Ingram wanted to develop those properties that lie to the east of the four that align or that, you know, are right on one nineteen, he wouldn't have access to those properties unless he came off on Ray Road. But Ray Road is not going to tee into all four of those properties. So you're going to have to go north or south somewhere from Ray Road to access all four of those properties. Correct. I understand. And I guess, you know, I would like to look at that property first to be able to make a decision. You know, I don't know if it's a possibility to, you know, close a section of that between where you are and then leave it open from, from Ray Road south to Crestview? From three hundred?
And see, and take their four properties right there and open up two Ray Roads, that would be fine. It would lose back is what, where, is where his children are.
Sure.
My neighbor's children are, you know, uh, Tom, or Jerry Tuley's property. His kids all run in the backyard. If we close just that section and open up alongside of my house, that would be fine.
Yeah.
That's what we need to do.
Well, right.
I'd have any matter. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I, I would rather, and I understand Mike, I mean, if, if we don't have to, I mean, I, I would prefer to see the whole thing opened up or to see, to see the whole thing remain opened. But if there's room for compromise there, maybe that's an option. But...
There's no, no reason to go that way when you have one nineteen. And Ray Road, it's the same owner of all four properties. It's planned. It's just for the, right now, there's nothing going on there. If, if he puts up one house, it's one house on, or it's one nineteen.
Yeah, if that's what you did. If that's what you did. But you, we can't make a decision based on what if, if there are four properties that are sectioned off there, there's the possibility for development of all four of those. And I would hate to see that, you know, for, for this homeowner as well, or this property owner as well as anybody down the road. But I'm, I'm not ready to make a decision on it today.
Have you ever seen anyone drive?
Paul, Paul Ray's got two, two, because he owns this house. I was the only other person that ever seen him drive down. Jerry Tuley, he maintains it between us. That obviously was about at this point where we're going to do, you know, making sure that that right away, that his, his access to his property is available. He lives right there. He don't drive down. He goes around and goes to Ray's Road. It's not...
Well, I just see no reason.
I just, I just want to look for a second. The way people begin...
Well, we got one neighbor that don't want it closed, so...
I, I would stop at that one neighbor. Is that the, right?
I, I just see...
So then the county's going to start maintaining it? Or what if, if somebody parked vehicles out there on it, the county's going to tell them, tell them, tell that?
People park on that, that would be a policeman.
Whatever you want, yeah, because it's...
That would be a policeman. We will, Kenny said it best. I think it's best for us to take a look at that as well, have an opportunity to talk to, uh, our highway superintendent about that and take a closer look. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Nathan? All right, losing voice, losing my voice can hit the highlights. Current balance of our contingency, about a hundred and forty thousand. Um, most of what we spent since last month, when I reported to you, was on those window repairs. No change orders since the window repairs. We will be looking at a few odds and ends. We know cleaning things up as we're drawing near the end of the project. Um, we will be getting fifty percent refunded to us on the cost of that change order debacle with the HVAC system. Had some help from Jacob and Ton and Blank on addressing it. Would have liked to have gotten more, but Ton and Blank said, given the complexities of the issue, should be very happy to get that much back. Um, as of right now, we are scheduling our all-day punchless walkthrough with Luminat on the third of June. This could change if something surprises us, but that is where we are right now. That is a month earlier than I had been telling people. I don't know if we're just that far ahead of schedule or if I've just been conservative with expectations. There will be things after that date, all, any corrections that need to be made, furniture installation, delivery, all that sort of thing. But we are on pace to have the checklist walkthrough on third of June. Um, and like I said, paving may happen after that, might before landscaping, furniture, IT, getting people settled back in, that sort of thing. Um, this past week, the most recent work, um, site grading has been done, prepared for landscaping and lawn seeding. Streets have been torn up Meridian and parking lot behind Howard so that that can be repaved. Started pouring concrete. Uh, they ran electrical for a new light at the base of the flagpole, refrigerant installation in the air conditioners. Um, rowing sub consultant was onsite doing underground boring to run new fiber from the Justice Center basement to the courthouse. Any questions?
There are all new furniture going in, Nathan?
Ninety-five percent new?
Ninety-five?
There are maybe ninety. There are some things we're having restored, few odds and ends, some storage cabinets, but mostly new.
Has that furniture been ordered?
Yes.
Good. What's the anticipated date for that?
Fifteenth of, or sixteenth of June.
Thank you. You have any other items, Nathan?
Not right now. I might turn up something to discuss them.
Okay, thank you. Mary Roth from the Health Department? Marie, I apologize.
Um, we just came to ask about the MiFi's for the Health Department?
Thank you.
Yes. Um, I think I sent a letter to Teresa. Um, you had requested a request in writing, so Edwina wasn't able to make it, so I'm, I don't know if you got chance.
Is this on the, the hotspot devices? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. Thirty-nine ninety-five, that's per device. Is there a monthly fee for that as well?
That's the monthly fee.
That is the monthly fee. Okay. And that's for two of those.
How will you be using those again?
Um, they'll be used when Edwina goes out to do student sections, septic, um, and well permits. Access all of her, um, documents and then put in the information spaces that she needs to. Uh, the nurse can also utilize them when he's doing vaccine. Um, and then anybody else in the Health Department. I've done a couple of presentations at the school and we needed, um, internet access to do that. Um, just, they're just secure. I wasn't able to utilize my phone. So in those ways, outside.
Very good.
Okay. I, while, while you're up here, I have gotten a, a few phone calls just on, um, restaurant inspections. Did you guys get a list of those that have been done January one to current?
Yes.
And just have Edwina either email them or, you know, forward those where she is in inspections for restaurants? Thank you. And...
I'm good with this. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to...
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept the request for two hotspots. Any further discussion? Beg none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under other business, approve and sign, we have the regular session minutes from May the fifth.
I have read the minutes from May the fifth and I will make a motion to accept them as is.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May the fifth. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. We also have been sent the claims and payroll number ten.
I looked over to make a...
And claims?
Claims.
Claims.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims and payroll number ten that was presented to us. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next, we have revised ordinance regulating the use of county vehicle. And actually, it probably should be phrased off-road vehicles and golf carts. So, um, Sheriff, would you mind explaining some of the revisions we've further looked into the ordinance?
Okay, it seems to be work in progress. Uh, my chief deputy, Fred Rogers, has been working on this. Um, a couple of things that have been changed. I guess you got... An age requirement instead of a driver's license. Uh, the age requirement would be sixteen and they're going to be required to wear a helmet. Driver's license. Horn requirement would be... Turn signal requirement would be... motorcycles, vehicles, hand signals. So we can do that. Um, and then the reporting of accidents. In an accident, you report it to the DNR. Add it on there. And also, uh, I want to report, because we've been having a few inspections on May thirty-first. I've been set up a section site, nine AM. It's on Saturday. I'm going to go over. Anybody that wants to come in, nine AM to ten AM or for as long, takes it, there's a hundred of them, I'll do it. Bar City, Francis, Velma, Derry, if anyone wants to set that up over there, I can go over. Inspection. And a lot of people ask. I did a thing on the radio last week. I tell people, because in the newspaper, and it wasn't their fault, they said about the turn signal. A lot of people, I wanted to make sure. I didn't have one on. I, I'd had to order turn signal, it was changed it.
The ordinance still states sunrise, sunset?
Sunrise and sunset, yeah, even though, and they need... It, it's went pretty well, part of your inspections. Bring it into the jail, we'll come out to you. These are golf carts, ORVs, whatever. I've even had people ask about electric bikes, electric... Mini bikes.
Okay. So the ordinance reflects that?
Yes.
Electric bikes do not?
Not need a tag.
Snowmobiles?
Snowmobiles, yes. I know a list on the county's website. There was concern about electric bikes, that sort of...
Chris, can I ask a question? This is, and I'm not trying to go backwards, but I've gotten some phone calls on this, um, from county residents who are not happy about having to pay and go through these inspections and that...
Yep.
The only reason we're having to do this is because solar came to town and we're being punished because solar is here. Is this, how many counties are doing something like this?
Uh, boy, I don't know. You look, look on the Indiana map. I know we were only, us and Floyd County had ag and construction. The majority of them have an ordinance. There was only two that had it like us, us and Floyd County. It was exemplified, construction. It was very confusing on the ordinance. What we did is open it up for everybody. I, I think this was... I think we should have done this several years ago. Ag. I, I think we should have done this a while. Everybody writes. We, we mirrored this over Jasper County. Um, I don't think White County has one. Oakheart County has them. Yeah, you can look on the Indiana map and it's all coded at which counties actually have it. You're going to get confused.
But when did Jasper put theirs in place? I mean, was theirs put in place because of solar as well? So it was probably about the same time solar rolled in?
You know, you're trying to do a good, you know, and we're not taking the personal action. You know what I found in this job? You're not going to make everybody happy. You know, we're just trying to get people...
I understand. I understand.
Farmers say, well, I had one guy say, well, I'm driving a car.
Yep.
Matter. Now you can drive it all over the county if you want to, as long as you meet these requirements. Okay?
Yeah. I understand. I'm just sharing the concerns I've heard that people feel like they're being punished.
Don't even have to bring it. Yeah, I'll drive to you. I've done that.
Right. Okay.
I was, I was first approached about someone wanting to drive their side-by-side, uh, the Pulaski to eat from their house. Legally, they're not to do that, right? We've heard other people say they've, uh, been pulled over, uh, by, uh, the DNR for, they had their children on there just going from house, one house to another, which currently is illegal. Um, I've seen many, uh, golf carts, uh, while driving through the country, uh, which is illegal. Uh, this gives an opportunity for those people to do that, I think. Uh, there are several counties that prohibit it all already. I mean, we're just ag and commercial. Uh, so it's a different type of environment. There's pretty rural. Lake County, uh, you look at the DNR website, I know Lake County prohibits anything and everything. I know it's a little bit different, but they're, they also have some country.
Get on there, get on that Indian, fill the map of Indian.
Okay.
Loud and prohibited. Like I said, ours was only us and Floyd County. I, I think just... I'd see it. Hey, I'm only driving a car, but you're still...
Right. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to bring it up because I've had, I've, I've been getting phone calls, so I appreciate the discussion.
I've got the same.
I, I had individuals talk to me as well.
I've had them both ways. I had people saying, great, now we rest at ease. So, now I had other...
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any questions about the changes? We're just trying to make it a...
Yeah.
Fred's worked on this a bunch, make this.
I, I appreciate Fred looking into that and you, and you as well, Chris, Jacob. I think that these changes were, were much needed. Those are things that we probably overlooked. I think that our community, I think it would go a long way to make those changes.
It's a rural community.
Yes. I think they're very positive.
I'd make a motion to approve Chris's changes, update on the ORV, regulated. Number ten.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the changes to ordinance number ten dealing with golf carts and off-road vehicles. Are there any further discussion? Being no further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chris, Chris, on another note, I've seen a lot more activity with, um, sheriff's department vehicles, um...
I've stopped a few out there.
I've seen you. And I appreciate it.
I had to remind them what direction they need to go on there.
Exactly. And as you, as you had one stopped, another one was, was pulling up right behind you, going the same direction.
And I went to the worksite and told them that needed a stop.
Yeah. So I've, I've seen much more presence and that's greatly appreciated. So thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah. So, uh, Chris and Fred, if you all would get with Teresa today and take ensure she's got the correct copy, take out the items that were changed here and also reflect the bicycles or items in ordinance. You could get that printed in the paper. We appreciate that. Thank you. Maybe there could be conversations. Well, thank you. Under conference request, uh, we have Health at Home Beyond Conference in Plainfield from June ninth through the eleventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the conference request for Marie Roth for the Health at Home and Beyond Conference.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conference request for the Health Department for Plainfield. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Under discussion items, um, Nathan, you had stated earlier, you had something.
So, back in February, we had discussed this at the CDC meeting and I was going to bring it to the commissioners. But then by coincidence at that same meeting, when Lee Ann Wright from the Community Foundation was giving it a report, an update on the report that Ball State had prepared for them, she brought this up. Um, this discussion picked up a little bit, conversations I've had with Don, Sheila, Big Mike, and a few others recently. Um, did not have a quorum at our CDC meeting, so we did not make an official recommendation on this. But we are of the opinion that it is the time for the county, actually passed due for the county, uh, maybe Dakota, Curbsy to help us with an application for a planning grant through OCR to update the county's comprehensive plan. We have not had an updated comprehensive plan since it was done in two thousand and nine. There have obviously been a lot of changes, some more minor, some that have been very hot button issues in the county. And quite honestly, the comprehensive plan that was put together back then was done by a firm that was probably out of its element to be doing that work. And there, and a, a comprehensive plan done well covers a lot of ground and provides a comprehensive roadmap for the county going forward. So we are of the opinion that we should be moving in that direction.
Good. You need our, first of all, I thought Lee Ann and the Community Foundation with Ball State did a very nice report, very thorough, uh, getting a lot of input from the county. I do believe we need to take the next step on that. That would be your organization moving forward with...
We, we would be happy to get the ball rolling eventually. Plan Commission would have to be involved, just like anything that is land use related. It would have to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners before the Commissioners could formally adopt the new plan. But I am the county's delegate to Curbsy. I've got a good, I am happy to start that conversation, at least with Edwin. Check on the timeline of planning grants. Um, make sure, given that when we have one active grant, make sure we are falling in line at the right point, figuring out how much we want to apply for and consequently, what our local mesh commitment would be. But I think that the time has passed due for the county to move forward on this.
I would agree. I would encourage you to do that. Give formal recommendation from us or a motion. If you bring that to us at the next board meeting, presented anyway. Any other comments?
No.
Thank you, Nathan. BS update?
Uh, first, I'll start...
First, I'll start with the independent engineer contract. So we sent over last week a contract to be on-call engineer for the county, but this is just an engineering service as, on an as-needed basis. So as things come up, whether that's involved solar for review, something Gary would need for engineering standpoint, or helping facilitate any bid services, this gives the county an opportunity to retain us and move forward with the contract quicker than just advertising and bringing someone forward. That's the first thing I believe Jacob was able to review.
I, I was. I sent you guys an email with just a couple of comments, all in all, the contents of it, I made a couple of comments about my ideas and things. That's subject to your, you may ask about, you know, are they to negotiate those things? That's up to you. I, I have had other commissioners in other counties take the position of, hey, if it was being done in our county, we don't need contracts to require them to be in our county. I understand for BS, they're considered around Indianapolis and that's why it's in the main county. That's subject to your level. But other than that, if you want to discuss it and then take it and review it, the other terms are applied.
Comments on that?
I would like to discuss it a little further than making any type of motion today to approve it. I, I do agree that, you know, because BS is working in Plaski County, that I would prefer to see any litigation take place in Plaski County because we are going to incur more cost if it's in Indianapolis for the travel. I also, I'm trying to remember what the other point was, just on liability. Right, right.
What were your concern with limited liability?
I wanted to just point out to you that it is, I mean, and I understand it's their contract. It is very simple to BS that essentially limits, I mean, if there were any excuse limits, what the damages would be to the county essentially, we could get the monies paid. You know, again, that's, just so that you're aware, we made that decision. And so, I, you know.
I, and I.
I want you to be aware of that because there is a time constraint on there, which I understand that as well, but the, the time constraints in the section wasn't as constrained as just kind of more. I want you to be aware of the availability dispute, there are limits of the reception for the, you know, whatever available for the county if they want to dispute. And it is very fairly to BS, which was such a difficult contract. So I just wanted you to make sure you're ready to give questions and ask about reviewing.
Yeah. Again, I would, I would like to take the time to review it a little more, only because we've gone through a period of time where many of the agreements for Plaski County have been written, very heavily cited for solar developers, and it's given the county very little leeway to negotiate, and I just, one more time.
In my mind, this is more of a policy issue than a legal issue. There's nothing in that section to me that creates a legal problem.
Right, right.
I want you to be aware of what they're signing. So let your opinion as far as getting this.
Right.
Would you, of course, we want to review it a little bit further, but dealing with the, the two issues Jacob brought up, you, I would be in favor of Jacob talking with BS to see if those could be a little bit more neutral or favor of the county or within this next week to see if he could do that.
I would agree with that.
Very good.
That good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to bring it up, let you know, we sent it over. So some things that could fall into that, things that have been falling under the contract already with the Ameth project. So what this would, mine, mindset would be, we would utilize the on-call engineering contract, and then that bill would be presented to the solar company and they would pay that portion of that task force. Now, it's not the entire on-call with, the county is covered by the solar, those projects associated with solar would be covered by that. This gives you other opportunities. It's at an hourly rate to help resolve any other issues. Yes. Yeah, I'll be.
Jacob, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Be able to work with BS this week.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. In terms of the solar project, I believe I sent an email on Friday to all of you about a, that occurred with a silver truck. That was a solar truck. By knowledge, there had been no injuries. We are still under investigation. I'm waiting on the official report as to what had caused.
Anything in the truck? Were they hauling gravel?
I believe it was empty. During last week's construction meeting, we are given more of a timeline for the work that's occurring in Ameth South, specifically the southwest quadrant where they're doing pile driving. They're expecting that pile driving work to be completed in a few weeks. As I mentioned, some work that this on-call contract cover, which we had to do recently, some of the radia they sent over to us for review, as well as additional signage that they're planning on instituting for wayfinding to get to the site accordingly, as well as driveway flagging. Had to combine different MUTC exhibits to make it more uniform for a driveway. Dust control continues as we receive complaints, we relay that, or prompt it out there as possible. I tip my hat to the solar company for how responsive, but also appreciate all the concerns we received from the residents to be aggressive.
The Town and Country is doing that work as well, or they have a different?
I believe they have a different company doing the dust control. Town and Country has.
Correct.
Speaking of which, 800 and 600 were worked on last week. We have a little bit of work left carries over to this week, and so they will continue to work on that. So Town and Country is starting to ramp up, so road repairs may not be as responsive as they had been over the past month, but they are still going to be, we're still going to be tracking it and making sure that they are adequate. I do want to bring mention to trail cam that we had put in place that was damaged. We coordinated with the developer and they heard us that the truck that was caught in the camera did not go back towards the sign, or towards the cam, so it was damaged by someone coming from a different direction to this. At this time, we don't have any further action on how to rectify it, so we put up a new cam as we advised, and we're continuing monitoring, documenting.
How long has that been?
It was installed.
Did you re-put it?
A day or two.
Day?
Wednesday last week it was installed. And then, from the trail cams, we continue, we are issuing violations, sending over the documentation of the potential issues, and then issuing the fees accordingly. And then any issue that billing and them were having has been resolved. That was more or less how are they, check payment online. That has all been resolved, to the best of our knowledge.
Any questions, Tim?
No, you had on the fourth breach to be issued, and that's on designated roads, is that correct?
Uh.
I'm looking at your Sunday, May 18th.
I believe.
Report, so that hasn't been issued yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure. Tim, how will I be notified when you get payments, payments are deposited into the account? Will I get an email from you or from somebody, just so that I have a heads up that it's in there?
To the best of my knowledge, how that process was, a certain amount was left in there, and as that amount finished, county requested for company. I don't know what that dollar value was and at what threshold county needs to.
So are you asking about? Money for their compliance contracts?
Yes.
So I have, I get CC'd on all of the invoices, and so I've been tracking those totals.
As they're high, yeah.
And subtracting the cost plus the 5% the county's supposed to get.
Okay.
So I have been asking, I have been sending invoices when appropriate and asking them to let me know. And with the exception of one company who we are still waiting on for the first payment, that being Inverge, we, they have, the others three have been very good about, and I, and most of the time, with the exception of the first May Apple payment, letting me know it's coming through. And May Apple had made the payment before I had even sent the invoice, and that's the only reason that didn't happen. BS, Inverge, I have invoiced them and sent several requests. Either you or, I think Laura had actually emailed me about it, so I have sent them again. I might be asking Jacob to intervene because I'm getting tired of sending emails and getting empty responses.
No, we've already.
Sorry.
Bill already. It wasn't much, but it was.
Right.
Or the other one.
But in general, that's the process. They give me a prize at one of their points so that I can invoice companies every time.
Okay, kind of. I'm on, in the same loop.
Nathan, will you give that information to Jacob? And Jacob, would you be able to communicate this week? Thank you.
I, I do have a couple other concerns, just, and I received an email this morning from a resident in the south area located very near the yard, the, the lay-down yard, who is complaining of all kinds of trash that they're having to pick up, some of the black silt fencing, and I'm going to give this to you afterwards so that you've got it as well. And then, there were two, two residents right there that both sent emails this morning. Another is regarding the lights, what did he, he called them like strobe lights or something that are, that are going on every night? So if that's something that, I, I don't know if it's a night security watchman or what it is, but that this isn't in their house when they're trying to sleep in the evening, these strobe lights is what he said, strobe lights on a vehicle on all night long because it happens almost every night. So it's interfering with his sleep, I'm sure, and just all of that.
Jenny, do you know if that's actually at the lay-down yard or is that on the county roads?
It could be at the lay-down yard. This person lives very close, but, you know, and if it's in the lay-down yard, if, if they could at least move. I know the one that's in central, down from me, they sit in the same place all night long. I mean, the, the vehicles, every time we drive by, the security vehicles are sitting in the same area. So if they can move, just so that they're not in that homeowner's direct, you know, path, that would be very helpful. The other one, I'm concerned, and Jacob, I haven't heard back yet, where are we on figuring out how far is the fence part of, I mean, in my opinion, it is, part of the solar array, because this homeowner is saying, well, both of these, the man who was complaining about the strobe lights said the furthest, I think, that the solar, here it is, the furthest distance between my property and the solar fence is 33 feet. And the other one, the widest distance between my property line and the solar yard is 25 feet, and I'm not so sure towards the back of the north side of my woods that some of the black fencing is not on my property. So I'm going to give this to you, but where are we? My concern is, this project isn't ceasing, it's going on, and we've got a lot of homeowners who are concerned that when this is said and done, it is not going to be the 150 feet that it is supposed to be per the ordinance.
There's some correspondence to Chris Scholman about that, and I've been playing with him. I, I had sent him the condition of, I kind of adopted Carla's interpretation.
Right.
Well, because there's the county, the county policies, and also the IC code, because the county can adopt additional, has adopted additional regulations. So I, I took Carla's analysis to, to be correct and submitted a, I have not been back from this.
But we understand that they're, they're, they're developing. This is happening. Are we going to ask them at some point to remove all of this and go to the 150? Because honestly, if it's my property, and at the end of this, they're within 150 feet of my property, somebody's going to pay to have that removed, and if it has to be on the county, county's going to do it. If you can't get the solar developer to do it, I'm going to the county, and I'm going to force the county to pay to have all of this stuff moved back. So at what point, this needs to be decided today, or we are going to have multiple homeowners looking for a correction on this, and because of these limited liabilities that are in these agreements, this is one of the concerns I have, if there's limited liability with these solar developers and they're not going to rectify this in the end, someone is.
Do you have a chance to communicate with their attorney this week? Follow-up?
I sent you a follow-up email.
And you just haven't heard back. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say this, I would say then, in my opinion, development stops until this is figured out, because this is, this is a lot of work that's going on that's going to have to be redone. And we were just going to let them get so far, and they were going to say, well, we're too far into the project, you can't, we can't stop now. Then it's on the county. I just want to make that clear. Then it is going to be on the county, and I will be the first as a commissioner to say, you have every right as a homeowner to come back against the county because we did not do our jobs in making sure this was done. It's just, it's a sad thing for the residents of Plaski County, and I'm one of them. So I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people that 25 feet, 30 feet, this lady has a tree, one of her trees is going over the fence of the developers of the lay-down yard. I, I don't know what our, Tim, maybe you know, what, how far away does a lay-down yard have to be from a property owner's, from a non-participating property owner?
I believe that's what the discussion is, that the attorneys are having, and what the, those setbacks need to be resolved. And so, and so we are given clear direction.
Yeah.
As to what we can force, monitor, it's hard for us to really determine, especially when it's a pre-construction area that's going to get decommission versus a permanent structure.
Right.
And so I believe that's where the discrepancy lies, some of the areas, the silt fence, lay-down yard, that's all going to be reviewed once the construction is completed.
Right.
And so I believe their stance is because that's not permanent, that is why it's.
Sure. And I understand that. I'm, I'm just talking about the fencing, the actual fencing that is being installed today. I mean, it's, it's been installed, that if it is not 150 feet back, that is all going to have to be pulled up and removed. And I know they're starting to do panel work in the south section, correct?
Yes.
So if we're already doing, installing panels, and we're going to have to move fences, possibly on some of these, that's a, that's a very large issue. Don, Mike, I mean, do you guys agree? This is going to be a concern with some property owners.
I think that's why Jacob is in contact with their attorney to determine the interpretation.
I do know, I, I will be back now. I do know a portion of it after I sat here, I think it's about interpretation.
But it's still question answered.
Yep. But I mean, I, I didn't disagree with Carla's.
Right. Right. And I, and I agree with that, so at this point, they're violating that. That's what I'm gonna, that's what I'm saying. They are violating what you agree to be Carla's interpretation and what I agree to be Carla's interpretation. And, and it's going on, this is happening quickly, so it's not going to be a well, that's water under the bridge. So um, it's not going to be a well, that's water under the bridge. We're not going to go back and correct your property. It's going to be, oh, yes, we are going to go back and somebody is going to move that. And that is going to come at a cost to somebody. It's not going to be okay.
Tim, have you had a conversation with company about this concern? Has BS had a conversation with company about these?
Other than outside of with Jacob? We're trying to get a mutual understanding for what they're going to stand or what they have. We're just trying to.
But it's not, but it's not. I've talked to homeowners and I've been to their homes and I've seen the fence and it's not. I'm just, I want to state that now, it's not. All right, I thank you, Jacob, because the county is going to have to do something about it. It is going to fall on the county and I just, we need to be prepared for that. Okay, thank you. Tim, I'm going to give this to you. These were the emails I received this morning and they only came to me. They said they tried to send them to BS and it wouldn't go through. So yeah, so those are for you. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for keeping us updated. Thank you. This oper- at this time, we'll have an opportunity to take public comments. We ask that you state your name, residency, speak once and limit your comments to two minutes or so.
Good morning, Gail Lambert, Rich Grove, I'll try to keep it. A few things here and I've added since. When I, for having an ordinance now on the side by sides. When I was out campaigning last spring and also last fall, I had residents in Rich Grove asking about being able to drive side by side. So got some happy people. Not sure about my grandson. He likes to drive the four wheeler up to the ditch. I'm not sure what he's going to do. We had a quiet week. No construction going on. It was nice just sitting on the front porch and having the quiet rural country. The only thing that kind of broke it up yesterday afternoon was a drone flying over our field. Went along our wood line, neighbors. Nobody in the neighborhood has a drone that I know of. So kind of questioning whose drone and. I don't know what the rules are. Somebody made the comment, well, without a sky. So I guess Chris will have to do a little research on that. We're just curious why they were on our property.
Can anybody? I don't know this either, which is why I'm interrupting. Airspace, so anybody can go anywhere?
Yeah, but it's like eight, 10 feet. Down to the ground. I just didn't know why anybody being. I appreciate it. Thank, all right, thank you, Chris. Friday was was kind of a disaster in the neighborhood. A mile from us, a gravel truck did go over. It was loaded, eastbound, coming from the highway going. I've got a picture showing that it was eastbound. I've got pictures showing gravel, a little bit in. So it was, I think. That needs to be investigated. Coming home, think about time the accident happened. Little after I saw a neighbor on the road, stopped, talked to him and he's upset. He's on 400 North, section of road is a no solar road. Pulls out onto our pulls out on Blacktop and he's gravel trucks. So they weren't where they were supposed to be. Dunish left for Valpo, got gravel trucks on another section of 400. I mean, our road, not where they're supposed to be. We later find out about the accident. So they were probably scurrying, trying to figure out a way, an alternate route. But this should have been planned. There are legalized routes that they could have gone and not gone on the road. Truck drivers shit upon themselves or maybe they were told. Anyway, they're on on solar roads. Okay, we did a Sunday drive. And I'm glad the discussion has been more about the fencing. Because we saw all kinds of. There is fencing that. Not a very good softball player. I could probably throw a softball at the basketball. So there are, I don't know how many different variations. Somebody's got to be. And keeping up with that. I don't understand why there's an issue. We've got ordinance. It's in place. It's our rules. Why are we dickering with the solar company? I I just don't understand that. And if they won't adhere and follow the rules and shut the project down, they shouldn't continue building, putting fencing at any distance select. Dust control, that was supposed to be taken care of before the first truck rolled. After I sent in several complaints, we finally had some application of dust control put down and that was the last fee. And that's great, we appreciate it. But prior to that, water trucks would, that was after I complained. We would have maybe at least a dozen gravel trucks up the road and come back down the road. Dust flying. An hour or two later, the water trucks show up. Then done. That should have been the first truck on the road. So I guess I don't understand why we've got ordinances in place not being in. Our company is what they want to do. And we're litigating. We're going to have, thank you, litigating. But it's follow the rules. I think those are my comments for today. But that's just kind of a little review of solar in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Honey Erlich, and thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit here. I wanted to kind of cabbage on to what Gail's been saying. Our ordinances are crystal clear. The setback is 150 feet for any component of the SCES system. And I think this argument about whether it's permanent or if it's going to be decommissioned is ridiculous because they have told the landowners that this ground will all go back and be decommissioned within 25, maybe 30 years. So and now they're saying that some of it's going to be permanent and some of it is going to be decommissioned. And that's what they're basing the 150 feet setback on? I'm sorry, but that's, you know, that holds no water whatsoever. And I've talked to Carla too, and I'm sure she told me the same thing she's told Jacob and Jenny. But in her view, what she told me was any component that's added to these fields that would not be there had solar not been here. That's fencing, that's the buffering, that's cabling, that's any component that the solar people are bringing in. So I I'm with Gail. I don't see the pretty black and white. So thank you for addressing that. And then also, what the solar company has done is they have put cable underneath a non-participating landowner's property. They were told about this. They moved the cabling, but they did not move the cabling 150 feet away from the non-participating property owner, which should be done. Part two of that is they removed trees. Don, I talked to you briefly about this at the last meeting. They removed like 20 some trees off this non-participating property owner's property. That has not been resolved. Mama solar is dragging their feet. They haven't done anything. So unless they do something very quickly, that will be litigation as well. The other problem I have with the new ordinance that Sheriff Shram and Mr. Rogers have been working on, I think it's a great idea. I'm really concerned about the timing because I'm afraid that this is going to increase people, encourage them to use their off-road vehicles more frequency. And we're doing it at the time where we have increased traffic. I understand there's going to be 700 parking cars, solar cars parked on a county road. That's a lot of traffic. You've got all the truck traffic that we've been hearing about from the community. You've got increased dust. You have high, you know, speeding, excessive speeding, rolling stop signs. You know, we've got some major highway traffic issues right now and I'm real concerned. I I hope it doesn't increase these people to use their vehicles like they should have the right to do, but I'm just concerned about their safety. Right now, it's scary to be in a car on some of these county roads. So that's my concern. And the other thing that I'm real concerned about is what I heard this morning about the comprehensive plan. Hopefully that you're all aware that the comprehensive plan is a legal document and it's supposed to be a long-term document, you know, a five to 10 year plan for the county. And this is not a plan that you just change when you want to do something different than what the plan states. And as you're well aware, that you've been hearing a huge division within the county between and solar has started a lot of this. But you've got the people that want to hang on to the ag and the rural and what the county has been. And then you have people that don't really care and they want to, you know, bring in commercial solar, battery energy storage and a lot of these non-ag, you know, commercial or industrial purposes. So you've got a huge divide. So I'm hoping and encouraging, please make a committee of people from the community to work on this comprehensive plan. Because I've heard over and over that Nick Norga and his committees have trouble getting even a quorum. So I don't want the comprehensive plan for the county to be devised between three people. I I think it's got to be a cross-section of the community and I think it's got to be a long-term focus. And please do not look at the comprehensive plan as something you change just because you want to do something different than what the plan says. The plan is pretty much the Bible for the county. So I, it's it's very important. Jacob, you missed part of this probably, but correct me if I'm wrong, but the comprehensive plan is a legal document. And it was ignored when all this solar came in. So we we got to get it right and we can't just change it because suddenly, you know, you see maybe an opportunity to bring in some money to the county. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Bill Moyer, ending great. I'm concerned, I'll not back up. Ordinance on the side by sides put together fairly fast, at least as the public can understand. Have the plan come? Why the perception out there? They're dragging feet on purpose. Not meeting requirements. Basically unacceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pro Town. Um, I've got a couple things. First thing is back in, back in. Got a soft and you guys just took your, your offices, I asked a question. I think it's a pretty valuable question. How many acres of solar are coming in this Palasca County? Limits. So from January till now.
No.
To get a response, we didn't have to get on the agenda. But I I think that as a public servant, it's got to be answered. Now, the next thing I'm going to bring up is probably. Chris, I really disagree with the. I ran into quite a few years ago. Mike Seastead was working for him. Now I work for him. But he was coming down, Chris, I'll ask you. So if I take my four wheeler down, not on US 35, but down the right of way, is that going to be an offense? Between between my field and the highway, grass strip, that's the right of way. Yep, that's an offense. Okay, wondered. So we are using and 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 a CO stopped Mike going down along the highway. This has been several years ago. I'd already taken the tractor out to the field. We move our pivots with a tractor and and the off-road vehicle, the four wheeler. We we use that also that he can get ahead of me and get things prepared so we can move the pivot efficiently. You know, I'm going to have to go down an eighth of a mile down 200 North to get to that pivot. Now I'm going to be in jeopardy getting $200 fine. You know, when that happened, when the CO from Stark County stopped Mike, I went right in to the sheriff's office, talked to Jeff Richwine. Jeff Richwine tells me, that's no different than you driving a tractor down the road. It's a tool that we use. And therefore I disagree with the ordinance. Another tax that we have to pay, my property tax, I know this doesn't have anything to do with it, but my property taxes are up 20% from two years ago. I think I I'm just getting tired of that kind of stuff. And so I I can't go up to 250 when, like, if we get a gust round and rain, I'm going to go up there and try and ditch water off. I can't go drive along the highway, go up to 250 and go down the road a quarter of a mile to take care of my field. And that kind of stuff, really irritating. And I just don't think it's necessary. Maybe there needs to be an exemption for agriculture or something like that. You know, I'm using it as a tool and that's the way I look at it. I want to do my job without interference, do it efficiently. And you know, you have talked about, you know, you don't have enough time or enough deputies. I've heard it in several meetings. Why? Why mess with farmers? That's, that's my opinion. Good, thank you.
Yeah. Hold on, Don, before you, before you adjourn. I've I've just got a question. No, I I have a question for myself on how things take place as far as procedures. During public comment, public comes up, they speak. As commissioners, are we outlawed from making comment back to them or? As commissioners, are we outlawed from making comment back to them, or?
We have the ordinance pending this, is that issued? And I don't have the authority, but my memory was, public comment is designed for this. They end up making a comment about whatever they like to come out. Commissioners are not required to respond to those.
Not required, but are, can we?
I don't have the ordinance pending, but I, my memory of it is, if you want to respond to something, I can.
Okay.
But you don't have to.
Right, okay.
It's not designed, it's not designed to get into a poopy mess of comments back and forth, thing.
Yes.
Because there's a time limit there.
Sure.
You could, and I'm not suggesting sort of you were doing this, but you could get someone come up, and then you have a 15 minute exchange.
Right.
And then somebody else who wants to speak doesn't have an opportunity because...
Sure. But, but if they ask a question, I mean, that was a simple yes or no question, we are okay to answer that. Okay, okay. That's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I was not getting myself in trouble. If a public member asks me a question, I don't need, I don't need to be charged with something.
It's because you're going to be giving a pass that company, and you're individual ordinance rules when you get on the agenda.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was not getting myself in trouble. Thank you for the clarification.
Any further items?
Morning. It is EMS week, so I just wanted to ask the public, if you see any of our crew members out about, any ambulance crew in the state, please just give them a thank you for their service. They're doing a wonderful job in this community to keep our ambulances staffed. Did also want to, I'm sorry I'm not on the agenda, we had an issue over the weekend, the new shower we had installed. Unfortunately, when they were doing the shower install, they found out that a lot of our pipes are leaking. We did have a pipe leak into the front office, seems minimal. At this time, I have Mr. Alexander coming back at 3:00 PM today. Is it okay to go ahead and have him look at it, or do I need to have a quote?
No, it's an emergency situation, so get it taken care of right away.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Happy EMS week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further items?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.